Hello. The League of Women Voters, Metro North Chamber of Commerce, and North Suburban Optimists welcome you to meet the candidates for those running for Andover City Council. Thanks to the candidates, the city of Andover, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, the League is holding our Meet the Candidates forums without an audience to avoid COVID-19 spread. Questions for this forum were submitted online in advance by the public. The candidates received the questions in the wording that they were submitted to the League to provide the candidates a preview of the type of questions they may be asked. I subsequently consolidated and rephrased similar questions and selected the ones to ask. We had more questions than we have time for in this forum. Look for upcoming forums at our website, l w v a b c m n dot org, and select Meet the Candidates option found on the heft-hand side of the webpage. This is where, this site is also where you can submit questions to the upcoming forums. My name is Bruce Pomerantz, trained moderator for Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters. Because I live in Fridley, I can't vote for these candidates, and I am not acquainted with any of them. All candidates for this race were invited to participate in the forum. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. These candidates care very much whom you vote for, but the League does not. The League does hope that each person, that each of you will vote. The goal of our forums is to help citizens become informed voters. The candidates for city council, and I'll list them in alphabetical order, are Ted Butler, is Mr. Folks here?
Mr. Folks is here.
Oh, I didn't ask how you pronounced your name, I'm sorry.
Just like that.
That's Folks, okay, I'm sorry. Maribella McDermid, Randy Nelson, Joshua Pacheco, and Mary Vanderlong. The term of city council office is four years. We will begin with three questions which were provided to the candidates in advance. This will be followed by questions that have been submitted earlier from the public through the LWV ABC website. And the candidates are arranged in order by my putting their names in a hat and drawing them in advance, so they are not in any logical order as far as alphabetizing is concerned. Now, the first question will go to Mr. Nelson. Describe your background and community involvement.
When will it start, as soon as they start?
You're starting now.
Okay. Well, to start, I would like to thank the Andover residents who support my campaign. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for the forum this evening. My wife and I have three children, and we are, two of them are young adults, one will be a sophomore at Andover High School this fall. We are active members of Constance Free Church. I have 30 years of public service leadership experience. I'm a healthcare provider, small business owner, and a combat veteran. I was deployed to the Middle East under Operation Enduring Freedom. As far as volunteer experience in the community, I am a basketball coach, soccer coach, boy scout, merit badge counselor, mercy auxiliary, nucleus clinic, tattoo removal for the youth, and feed by starving children.
Okay. Second, to answer the same question is Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Andover residents for your support. I guess my background is unique. I have not only lived in major metro areas like Minneapolis, but I've also experienced and lived in several small-town communities such as Purim, Glenwood, and most recently Andover, Minnesota. For the last 13 years, I've been in the transportation industry. I've spent most of my time as an over-the-road truck driver, however, most recently have spent my career in an operations role. Since my career shift, it has allowed me and my family to be more involved in the community. My wife is a member of the Andover Fire Department. My daughters attend school in Andover and participate in Andover youth activities such as soccer, karate, and softball. My oldest daughter, who is a sophomore, is also a member of the Andover Sheriff Explorers Program. And for me personally, I've created a community group that helps find local resources and local events, and I also have organized an annual citywide cleanup to keep Andover clean and beautiful.
And Mr. Folks, would you please answer the question next?
My name is Stephen Folks. I am running for city council here in Andover. First and foremost, obviously, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and also Bruce here for taking the time to help us get through and through the Meet the Candidates. I have been living in Andover for a short time, just three years, however, I've been living in Anoka County for over 30. My background in community involvement is anywhere from helping with my daughter's softball team to volunteering my time with the public defenders as a student attorney. As a younger person, I did spend some time in the Marine Corps. I did have an opportunity to go to Iraq for Operation Enduring, or Operation Iraqi Freedom, and also Afghanistan for Operation Enduring Freedom. I really do enjoy Andover, and I thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Vanderlong, if you would please answer, describe your background and community involvement.
And thank you, and good evening. Andover is an outstanding community, and I hope to make it so. Years back, I served a four-year term on the city council, and I'm now in my third year, excuse me, my third term on the Planning and Zoning Commission in the city. The last three elections, I worked as an election judge, and prior to that, I was a U.S. Census worker. Then happily, I ran the Halloween store and the Halloween capital of the world in downtown Anoka. A lot of you are my customers, I recognize here. During those years, I contributed to interaction between the city of Anoka and the business community and Anoka County. In Andover, I voted to stop the hazardous waste being dumped in our landfill. A horrible time when we realized that we were being taken advantage of. It took years to take care of that. Thank you.
Mr. Butler.
Thank you to the League. As my fellow candidates have expressed, we appreciate the opportunity to participate in this forum. And thank you to the viewers who are watching this. I'm Ted Butler, and for the last several months, I've had the honor to serve on the city council since the retirement of longtime council member Mike Knight. I'm enjoying my work, and I want to continue that work. My wife and I, my wife Andrea and I, have lived in Andover for over 20 years and are raising our two kids here. And I bring a broad range of civic involvement and professional experience to the role. From a civic perspective, I've fulfilled a lot of roles, most notably as a 13-year Park and Recreation Commissioner, including as vice chair and chair over that period of time. I've also served as a youth baseball coach, youth flag football coach, and president and track and field director for Andover Athletic Association. Professionally, I bring a 21-year career in finance and management at the University of Minnesota, in a role that demands that I not only bring hard financial skills to the table, but also people's skills in order to work with people and lead people toward a common goal. I look forward to the rest of this forum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. McDermid.
Hi. First and foremost, thank you to the League of Women Voters, Mr. Moderator, volunteers, and also to the Andover residents who support me and support all these wonderful people up here. My name is Maribella McDermid. I have lived in Andover, Minnesota, since 2001. I hold a BA in law. I'm multilingual. I speak four different languages. Presently, I'm working as a mediator and interpreter for Anoka-Hedepin court system. All my children have attended Crooked Lake Elementary and the high school. I do volunteer work as an assistant PTO at Crooked Lake. I've held that position several times. I also have a daughter that served in the Navy, a son that served as an Army Ranger, and my husband was a federal investigator in the Coast Guard for 28 years for homeland security. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, Ms. McDermid, would you be the first to answer the next question, please? What are your qualifications for serving, and why are you seeking this office?
I'm seeking this office because I haven't liked what has transpired in the past with Andover. I think that we need to move in a positive direction and keep Andover a close-knit neighborhood feel while expanding at a responsible rate. I believe that I could bring this to the table because I speak to a lot of our residents here. I communicate with a lot of them. I also volunteer a lot at the YMCA, in our local educational system, also in our court systems in Anoka and in Hedepin. I'm familiar with all the businesses and everything that we need to bring to grow our community, but also to keep it a nice knit, close community and keep that neighborhood feel that we have all grown accustomed to.
And next, Mr. Pacheco, would you please respond?
Yes, first, my qualifications are real short. I'm a citizen of Andover, and I pay taxes like everybody else. I am seeking the office of city council for many reasons, but the short answer is this: I want to get the community more involved, and I want everyone to have a say-so and be heard as to where their tax dollars are being spent. I believe the people of Andover should not have to question where their money goes. And also, I would like to continue Andover to grow and develop, but also, and most importantly, repair and maintain current infrastructure such as roads, trails, playgrounds, et cetera.
Mr. Nelson.
Well, I'm excited for the opportunity to run for city council. My family and I are proud to call Andover our home. To be effective, I believe elected officials must be responsive to the needs of their community. This is why I will promote transparent, fiscally responsible, local government and be the Andover's residents' voice at City Hall. I'm a fiscal hawk and believe in fiscal responsibility. Our government needs to remember that they are working with taxpayers' money. I support lowering residents' tax burden by exercising spending restraint. And I definitely support a referendum on any debt proposal by our city that commits our residents to a long-term tax burden. Thank you.
Mr. Folks, what are your qualifications for serving, and why are you seeking this office?
Thank you. My qualifications are, obviously, I am an Andover citizen, and I do pay taxes, just like Mr. Pacheco was saying. In regards to why I'm seeking this office, initially, when my wife and my two kids, now three kids, moved to Andover, we didn't know a whole lot about the town. We came from Ramsey. We were initially brought up with this whole issue of paying for the Andover Community Center and expansion with it. And from what seemed like there was a mayor that was running unopposed, and she was going to do her thing, regardless of how many people thought that it should not be done. This was something that somewhat irritated me, and irked me, and made me want to try to run for a council at least, so that we could have maybe a little bit more transparency, a little bit more restraint when it came to spending. In my opinion, I think Andover needs a few new faces, and I think it needs to be a little bit more fiscal responsible and fiscally conservative. Thank you.
Ms. Vanderlong.
Thank you. I felt it was my duty to return to Andover. After years of learning what I did about the community, years of living here, I was approached by many people who said, you know, you've got something to offer, are you going to go back? COVID-19 and the economic upheavals of it, the civil unrest we have, disturbances to our environment require that someone who has dealt with issues like this needs to be elected to the council. It's not a time for on-the-job training. I am already under oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and the laws of the city. A person who is calm, most of the time, sometimes not, and unifying as needed. I am that person.
And Mr. Butler.
So first of all, I'd like to say I think Andover is a wonderful place to live and raise a family. That's why my wife, at various junctures in our careers, have repeatedly chosen to stay in Andover and raise our family here. I want to see Andover stay that kind of a great community. And as somebody who's lived in Andover for over 20 years and has been engaged both in civic life and brings professional financial management and managerial experience to the role on the council, I feel really blessed to have some skills that I feel can benefit the community. So that really drives me to do that. I come from a family where community service was something that was just part of the fabric of what we did, from watching parents, whether it be coaching baseball or leading the Friends of the Library Board. I come from a family where people were always involved. So when my children were young, I set out to be involved. I got involved in the Park and Recreation Commission with various youth organizations in town, and have continued that involvement through today. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the council, and I ask the residents humbly for another term. Thank you.
And Mr. Butler, you'll answer the first to answer or last of the questions you were told about in advance. What are your short and long-term goals for the future of the city of Andover?
Sure, thank you. First and foremost, I have several, but I want to make sure that Andover remains a safe and healthy community in which to live. And that starts with making sure we have strong public safety. So I was proud to support the full renewal of the Anoka County Sheriff's Office contract for law enforcement in Andover, and I fully support making sure we have an excellent fire department as we currently have throughout the city. It also means making sure that we have safe and healthy opportunities for our families and young people, that we have great parks and trails, that we have safe pedestrian crossings throughout the city to make sure we can access those amenities. I want to make sure that we, along those lines, take care of our roads and our public infrastructure. Those are long-term needs that, if we let them fall too far behind, are difficult and expensive to recover from. I want to make sure that we exercise fiscal stewardship so that we have the public trust that we are working to deliver core services efficiently with people's tax dollars. And I want to preserve the character of Andover's neighborhoods in our community.
Ms. McDermid.
Well, I see Andover as a great community. I believe that going forward, we need to have a current council that's not blinded by future council decisions. We also need to have the full pledge when it comes to borrowing money from our residents. You know, meetings, I've noticed in this, in the past councils, the minutes are not getting there when they're supposed to do by city ordinance. We're getting them at a later date. They need to be quicker, so we need what is coming before and what needs to be voted on by our residents, because ultimately, we are spending our taxpayers' money. Andover actually has 59% of its income we get from our taxpayers, and we have to give them some type of fiscal responsibility and answer to them, and they need to vote for the things that they need in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Well, my goal is to ensure that residents are informed about big questions regarding the future of Andover. For example, growth goals for the city and the likely impact of Andover's finances, infrastructure, traffic, and schools. My goal is also to be transparent and keep residents fully informed and dig into the questions that need to be answered. Our police and fire departments are very important for our community safety. Well-trained, properly funded, public safety teams are necessary to uphold the rule of law and protect all of us. And our infrastructure, we need water, sewer, our roads. When I've gone door-knocking, I see some huge potholes. So instead of, we need to allocate funding to take care of this, and we have residents who have put in notices to the City Hall for that.
Mr. Nelson, what are your short and long-term goals for the future of the city of Andover?
Me again?
Oh, did I repeat? I'm sorry. Okay, I got it wrong. Mr. Folks, would you respond?
Thank you. My goals for Andover's future, I believe that Andover is a great, great place to live. Although I've only lived here for a few years, I have in-laws and friends that have lived here for 30-plus years. I am familiar with this area. I am familiar with the school system, and I'd like to have the funds that we generate, especially through taxpayer dollars, to be allocated more towards schools and roads and infrastructure. I believe I'm kind of echoing a lot of what the other candidates have said. It seems that we do have a lot of issues when it comes to roads. We'd like to try to get those taken care of, obviously, as quickly as possible. The other goal that I'd like to have for Andover's future is I'd like to work, obviously, with Sheriff Stewart in regards to how to keep Andover great and safe as it is. Andover is a great town, has very little crime, but we need to be proactive with it. We need to make sure that it stays that way. Thanks.
Mr. Pacheco.
I guess I would, I'm sorry. I would too like to say that, of course, we all want to replace and repair the roads. I think that deserves to be on the front and foremost, but also, I think the community center, as we all know, has been, the expansion has been done, it's completed. I guess my first short-term goal is I want to find a way for the community center to generate a profit. The community center needs to stand on its own and make its own revenue without depending on the tax dollars of Andover residents.
And Ms. Vanderlong.
Comprehensive planning. It's something that I've worked on twice in the city. These documents hold their worth for 10 years. And what all of the other candidates are talking about is encompassed under comprehensive planning: land use, safety, transportation, sewer and water management. The best way to deal with something is in its whole, to take the entire community and look at all the facets of it, and then we draw a comprehensive plan. Last night, we forwarded that plan to the city council for approval to the Metropolitan Council. Those are highly controversial and very rich documents, and it gets down to the core of what Andover needs. Like someone said to me, no metropolitan region can go without planning with the adjoining communities. If the tracks don't meet at the border, the train won't run. We have to know how to run our trains together. Thank you.
And now to the questions from the public, and the first one to answer will be Ms. It's about street maintenance and replacement. When should city revenue pay entirely for routine street maintenance or replacement, and when and what percentage of cost should residents on a street be required to pay for routine street maintenance or replacement? Ms. Vanderlong.
Excuse me. There are many components for dealing with financial aspects of roads. First of all, municipal state aid highway funds, they're generated from gasoline tax, sent back to our community. We have a good pool of that. We have a road and bridge fund, which comes from the general fund, which is your tax dollars. Holding developments to our new high, nice, strong standards so that our roads don't have to be repaired immediately, that they will be sustained, that's a good factor. And state statute for 29 assessments says that we can and should assess back to a property owner the improvement if it is warranted, and that becomes a decision of the city council. I've sat through several of those hearings, and they're not easy, but they're necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Butler.
Sure, though, this is certainly a priority of mine, making sure we maintain our roads and infrastructure. While I was proud about a month, a month and a half ago, to work with the rest of the council to move a million dollars from budget reserves that we no longer needed in one area of the budget into our road fund for next year to move forward some resurfacing projects. So the city mix of funding, the city typically pays for routine maintenance, so your pothole patching, your crack sealing, those sorts of things, the city pays for already out of general property tax dollars. As Commissioner Vanderlong mentioned, there's a road and bridge fund and state funding that goes into our roads as well. The city of Andover has chosen over time to use a compromise built on fairness between rural and urban areas of the city. So the rural areas and the more suburban areas, in order to consider the fact that a lengthy road in a rural area that serves few homes should not be a burden on the entire taxpayers throughout the community, that there should be some cost to the benefiting property owners of that road.
Thank you very much.
And with that, they've moved to a 75-25 mix of funding, and that seems fair to me.
Ms. McDermid.
Well, I, I know that the city of Andover has budgeted a certain amount of money, has been putting aside from taxpayer dollars for roads and infrastructure, and only 1% of that money has been used for roads and infrastructure. There's no accountability where the rest of the money has gone. It has been borrowed and never returned to fix our roads. I don't think the taxpayer needs to be taxed any more than it already is. Our taxes have gone up, I don't even know how many times under this mayor, and I think it poses a huge burden on property owners and on business owners. We're trying to attract business, not tax our residents to death. We need to find more fiscal ways that we are able to use the money that we already collect, which is an abundance of money, to run the city of Andover.
I'm going to repeat the question. When should city revenue pay entirely for routine street maintenance and replacement, and when and what percentage of cost should residents on a street be required to pay for future, for routine street maintenance or replacement? And now I ask Mr. Nelson to answer the question.
Could you please repeat that question?
Oh, sure. When should city revenue pay entirely for routine street maintenance or replacement, and when and what percentage of cost should residents on a street be required to pay for routine street maintenance or replacement?
Well, number one, our number one priority, when we talk to the Andover residents, our streets are the number one priority by far. And people are very upset that, for example, the ACC expansion, we borrowed $18 million, we taxed the people for that when our streets are behind. So we need to find revenue for that, and the Andovers are not, Andover residents are not happy about that. So we need to generate revenue to take care of that as the number one priority at the lowest tax level for the residents.
And Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, I guess first I would say I keep hearing the words repair and maintain when it comes to roads. I don't think that's good advice, really. The roads need a complete replacement. The continuous patching just doesn't do anything but buy a couple years of time and kick the can down the road. I would say that in terms of when, I would like to see roads put as the frontrunner and ramped up in order to cut down the time that's estimated to replace all current city roads. As regards to additional fees or taxes or levies for the residents of those streets, I don't think they should have to pay. I believe they're already paying with their property taxes, and there's a percentage of that that is to cover the roads, not a part of the roads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Folks.
Thank you, Bruce. The roads in Andover do seem to be like a hot topic, hot topic issue, obviously, probably behind the community center expansion, but the roads are a very close second, obviously. I wouldn't want to pay for having roads fixed. I pay property taxes. I don't think anybody wants to have to pay extra beyond what they're getting taxed for to pay for, to help get roads repaired or replaced. In this case, we would like to try to find, I would like to try to find a way to minimize and mitigate any cost for the taxpayers beyond what they're already paying for in property taxes. In regards to where the roads are, I believe that we are all in this together for Andover. One road is just as good as the other. I'd believe that I would like to see that all taxpayer money, or it would help all roads going forward so that some people wouldn't have to pay more than others. In this case, I would like, to reiterate, I'd like to hopefully see that no other further taxpayer money would be used for the roads. Thanks, Bruce.
And now, Mr. Folks, you're going to be the first to answer the next question. The last shall always be first, if you figured out my system yet. And it's related to something that you mentioned. Although the community center expansion is Although the community center expansion is nearing completion, several people submitted questions about it, indicating that Andover residents remain divided on the project itself and the manner in which it was approved. I have two related questions. I'll read them together first, so you won't inadvertently use some of your time during the first question, providing an answer that fits under the second question. And then I'll ask the second question as a follow-up after all of you have answered the first question. So the two questions are, first, what issues or what, under what circumstances or criteria should a referendum be placed before the voters? What is your reasoning if you answer that referendums should not be placed before the public and only elected council members and the mayor should make decisions affecting the community? And the second question, which will be a follow-up, is what lessons do you draw from the community center controversy going forward? And again, Mr. Folks, if you'll want me to repeat it all over again, I will.
I think I've got a pretty good idea of what we're asking here. Obviously, there was a big issue with whether or not there was going to be a public vote for the expansion of the community center. My feelings with this particular issue is that we elect officials to make these decisions so that we don't have to have a vote every single time there's an issue. However, in this particular case, there was so much contention, there was so much controversy, and there were so many people that did not necessarily feel that they were getting told all the answers, and they didn't want to spend that kind of money on an expansion. In this case, I believe a referendum should have been held. The citizens should have been able to vote for this. Blaine had a similar thing, and so did Farmington, where they were going to be spending a lot of money on a recreation center. They asked their voters. I don't understand why we couldn't have. That's my answer.
Ms. Vanderlong.
Thank you. It was not in my realm at the time, and the controversy was raging over the community center, to be able to vote one way or another on it. But I was privy to a lot of the issues with it. Should the council have run a referendum? Perhaps. The special election that would have had to be held for that would have cost approximately $25,000. It's a lot of hockey equipment. Every week, council members make decisions on behalf of the residents who have voted them in. At this time, I believe that the council felt that it was valid for them to make this decision. One of the things that was happening is that the bond market was bouncing a lot. And luckily, a very low bond rate because they sold the bonds quickly. They moved the project ahead. I fault them for not communicating well with the residents.
And Ms. McDermid, would you please answer the question of what issues or under what circumstances or criteria should a referendum be placed before the voters? What is your reasoning if you answer that referendums should not be placed before the public and only elected council members and the mayor should make decisions affecting the community?
I don't think the mayor and the council members, we could tell from this last non-referendum that they put through, the majority Andover residents had a voice. We came to a meeting. It was viewed as a workshop, not really a meeting. And most people voted that they didn't want this right now. We couldn't afford it. And I understand $25,000 buys a lot of hockey equipment, but it would have saved us, what, $12 million in the long run? I believe that we need to take it to the people. The people need to vote on it, especially when it's, you're talking about $12 million. We're not talking about $25,000 or a coffee from Caribou here. And these are our tax dollars at work. You know, I understand hockey is a huge part of Andover, and I love hockey. I support hockey. I actually contribute money to hockey. But there are other sports and other things that children do in the city of Andover that we also need to support, not just hockey.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Nelson.
Well, we live in a democracy, not, we don't have an authoritarian-type government. There were a lot of people in opposition to the ACC expansion, and they came to City Hall, and they had signed petitions, over 1,100 people signed a petition to force it to go to a referendum. So I do believe that every Andover resident should have a voice at City Hall. If, I'm all about a consensus, so if we have a voter referendum and the city of Andover agrees upon it, well, great. But if they're not given the opportunity to vote, that is not, that's the number one complaint that I hear. And then number two, when I'm doing the door knocking, is the streets. But we definitely need to have a referendum whenever we're going to borrow money and have the taxpayers pay that back.
Mr. Pacheco.
I guess I would answer like this, you know, when you say $25,000 is a lot of hockey equipment, I kind of chuckle because, in reality, it was, what, a quarter of a percent of the total project cost? I would always support a referendum when it comes to, I don't really necessarily assign a numerical amount. I do, when there's a certain amount of pushback from the people, I believe a referendum is in order. And in this case, I feel like the expansion was set just under $20 million because it could avoid a referendum on that. And I think that is a very misleading way to do business, especially in a town of 35,000 people. I guess that's where I would stand.
All right. And then, Mr. Pacheco. You will answer first the follow-up questions. What lessons do you draw?
Sorry to interrupt. I believe Mr. Butler did not answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't get that question yet.
Sorry, sorry. Yes.
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer, and I appreciate the sort of broad look at this. So when deciding between a referendum or the council voting on something, I look at whether it's going to have a serious long-term impact on the city. In the 20-plus years that I've lived in Andover, there's been one city referendum, and that was to take land permanently off the property tax rolls to preserve it as nature space in perpetuity. So that's certainly a very long-term thing. I would look at it on a case-by-case basis as a council member to determine whether it should go to a referendum or be decided by the council. My biggest lesson learned from watching that process play out, and as a parking wreck commissioner and as their rep to the community center commission, I was aware of what was being discussed in it during that entire time. The communication from the city, I felt, was very poor, and people felt blindsided by it. So one of the things that I'm committed to doing is making sure that if there are projects like this in the future, we communicate early and invite early input so that we can make a more informed decision earlier on as to what's the appropriate means of decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Pacheco. What lessons do you draw from the community center controversy going forward?
I guess, like I said in the previous answer, the lessons I take from it is simple. Everybody in Andover wants to be heard. I think that avoiding that just brings on confrontation that isn't needed. I think that any project going forward, like I said, that contains any kind of pushback should be sent to a referendum. And as far as the community center, I feel like it was to a targeted audience. And as Mr. Butler said, I also feel that the communication was poor. I mean, we were talking to people within six months of the expansion center being started. They didn't even know about it. On a project of this amount, that shouldn't be the case. Everybody in Andover should have known about it. They should have had an idea of a ballpark of cost and potentially what it could do to your property taxes, not just a small percentage of the people of Andover.
Thank you. Mr. Folks.
Thank you, Bruce. In regards to how we would, should maybe handle this in the future, I feel that with issues such as this that are so controversial and there are so many people that feel like they have not been properly informed, and there's so much pushback with this, a referendum, I believe, should have been needed. When it comes to the community center, I believe that's going to be a beautiful building. I think Andover is going to be very lucky to have it. However, if we could have voted for it, and if we would have voted for it to go forward, I would have been excited about that. However, we did not vote, and I'm not excited about that. So in the future, I would like to see these very contentious issues, especially when it comes to recreation facilities, to go to the voters. Thanks, Bruce.
Ms. Vanderlong.
Thank you. It made me very, very sad to see the divisiveness in our community over this issue. I have had the opportunity to go back many of the published minutes and observe how much misinformation was forwarded and was circulating throughout the community. There were some social media sites that were saying things that just simply weren't true, and there were others that had a very valid position. There are 33,000 people in the city of Andover, and 1,100 saw fit to speak to this issue. Good for them. They were speaking to a democratic situation. But as I said, I've found that many of them, and you can do this same thing, found out that much of the information they believed at the time was incorrect, such as the timing of the taxation, the amount of dollars. Again, the city council did a poor job in communicating this to the residents.
Mr. Butler, what lessons do you draw from the community center controversy?
So as I mentioned, communications is absolutely key with any large city projects. And that's something I'm committed to improving. One of the things we're working on right now is communicating to residents. I'm not going to sit here and relitigate something that happened two years ago, or almost two years ago at this point. But we are moving forward. The community center is almost built, and we're trying to make that more accessible to the public. So the walking and jogging track that will be available on the second level of the sports complex that any residents can use will be available at no charge to Andover residents. There will also be expanded open gym and open skate times available to residents with a number of credits that they'll be able to register for at no cost. So we're trying to move forward and move forward with the situation, make the community center an asset that all residents in Andover can enjoy. So I'm not going to go back and relitigate the past discussions about that. But communication is key, and I'm committed to making that happen on major decisions going forward.
Ms. McDermid.
Yeah, thank you. Well, you know, I have to revisit the whole expansion thing because as Mr. Butler said, you know, we can't revisit that. But there has been no projection numbers from this council or this mayor put forward as to the long-term effect that's going to have on tax dollars. Now, you know, presently, I drew up some of the numbers from the budget that the present council has put out there for the city of Andover. We have over 86 park expansions going on between 2020 and 2024. I'm thinking, okay, well, we're going to put more parks. That's fine. How much revenue are we getting from this city expansion? Where is this money all going to? You know, it's really great and dandy that we can't revisit this. But here's the thing, we're not, we're going to keep paying higher taxes, and I don't want to do that. I don't want our residents to do that. And we have to have accountability and proper budget. We need to see transparency and show our residents what we're spending, all this money that we're collecting from them.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Nelson.
Well, we, moving forward, we definitely need to be more transparent because there were quite a few Andover residents who were unaware of the ACC expansion. So there was a huge lack of communication, which leads to Andover residents not trusting our local government. And that's a big part of the anger that's out there. And although this did occur two years ago, people are still talking about it. And we don't want Andover to be divided. We want Andover to come together, be united. But from this point moving forward, we need transparency, number one, and some real, real, real communication out there. And I do feel that there's got to be a referendum so that people can vote. People want to hear their voice, especially when their taxes are going to be going up for the next 20 years to pay for it.
And now, Mr. Nelson, you'll get to answer the next question first. What do you see as the greatest need or challenge for Andover youth? And how, as an elected official, would you help solve the issue? Is that for me? Mr. Nelson.
Oh, can you read that again?
Yes. What do you see as the greatest need or challenge for Andover youth? And how, as an elected official, would you help solve this issue?
Well, the number one issue that the youth are facing right now is the COVID-19 pandemic. There's been a 40% increase in K-12 depression due to isolation and quarantine. Once we get through this pandemic, I think things will definitely improve. Another thing that the community has brought to my attention is that there are drugs out there. And I communicated with Anoka County Sheriff Department, you know, Stewart, and they are working on things that some people just are unaware of. So we need to really focus on getting the drugs out of Andover. And once we get through the COVID-19 pandemic, I think the kids will do much more, will do much better socially by getting out there.
Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, I guess I would say that, for me, it's the social isolation that kids are going through right now, as you said, has raised the depression rate, and it's, the suicide rate is alarming at how fast it's climbing. So I would propose, you know, definitely more activities in Andover, not just sports. I mean, I know sports are great, and my kids are in them as well, but I feel like there should be other things, whether it is the adaptive sports or whether it is activities like the robotics or to fishing or, you know, any outdoors-type things. I would say that that's probably my biggest thing I would like to push for in making it more affordable. I look at some of the fees that these sports cost, and I understand there is a cost with activities. But they're getting to the point where average families cannot afford them, especially with three, four kids that we, a lot of us have. Thank you.
Mr. Folks.
Thank you, Bruce. I believe that some of the issues that, or problems that children will be facing in the near future, obviously, with the COVID-19 pandemic, obviously, the isolation, not being able to go to school full-time. It has really had a negative impact for our kids, obviously. I would like to, as candidate Pacheco had said, I'd like to see more programs, more ways for them to socialize, ways to pay for sports, things like that. On a little bit more of a long-term issue, my time at the public defender's office, I found that methamphetamines has become a real issue in Anoka County. It may not be real big here in Andover, but it's there. I would like to try to work with Sheriff Stewart and see what his plans are and see how we can try to keep that out of Andover. It's there. It'll come, but we need to try to find our best to mitigate the issue. Thanks, Bruce.
Ms. Vanderlong, what do you see as the greatest need or challenge for Andover youth? And how, as an elected official, would you help solve this issue?
The challenges are, as all the other candidates have said, the need to have activity, to need to keep their brains and bodies working. We have a community center that is being rebuilt. Controversial, obviously, but it's our tool. Many of the things that are planned for that will bring the children into the center, particularly right after school, when the schools are in session. Some of the greatest surge of young people was moving into the older center. And children were having activities that were keeping them from off the streets virtually. The second thing that we do have is our amazing schools yet in this community. They're some of the best in the state. And the schools are beginning to work very, very well in learning how to keep kids separated and keep their masks on. Thank you.
Mr. Butler.
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments of my fellow candidates so far. I think having a safe and healthy community for our kids is of the utmost importance and is the number one issue facing kids. So whether we talk about depression, or whether we talk about various kinds of drugs, or whether we talk about vandalism or other activities that aren't constructive that kids can get into, by the time we get to law enforcement, and with all due respect to our great Anoka County Sheriff's Office, by the time we get to law enforcement, the cat's out of the bag already, the horse is out of the barn, whatever metaphor you want to use. We need to prevent that, and I have a long track record of being involved. And I have a long track record of being involved in keeping kids affordably engaged in healthy, productive activities. We need to continue to support that as a community, not just as city government, but as our youth athletic associations, as our schools, the excellent schools that were brought up, and the clubs that they bring to bear. We need to encourage more and more kids to stay engaged in those activities. When they do, we avoid some of these other problems. Thank you.
And the next question does go again. Oh, I keep crossing, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Well, we need to acclimate the children now to hybrid learning, trying to make it easier for the teachers and the students. That's becoming very difficult, especially now with the winter months coming. They're not going to be able to be outside as much, interacting as much. So we need to develop some type of programs with our schools that they could kind of lean on each other, and not only the teachers, but their other peers and their, and other parents, especially, you know, the one-parent families that we have out there, that maybe the parent is at work and the child doesn't have any type of family setting or lifeline to help them with certain things transitioning through school, because this distance learning is really difficult for me as a parent, probably so most of our council here candidates, and also for the teachers, because they're having to learn a brand-new way of hybrid teaching and to keep our children engaged.
Okay, now, Ms. McDermott, again, you get to go next for the next question. You get to go first for the next question. There we go. What will your response be when a resident complains that the city of Andover is not enforcing ordinances such as fish houses, boats, refuges in front of the house?
My response will be that we do have on the city, excuse me one second, I even wrote this down here, but we do have ways where they could go to the website and report or contact city officials and let them know what's going on, and then they could be directed to the proper channels in order to take care of those ordinances. Certain ordinances, honestly, we have so many violations, but we really need to put them in priority order as to how does it affect the public and then the resident, not the other way around, because, I mean, some residents would nitpick everything to death if that was the case.
Mr. Nelson.
Could you please repeat that question?
Certainly. What will your response be when a resident complains that the city of Andover is not enforcing ordinances such as fish houses, boats, and other debris in front of the house?
Well, my response to that resident would be, I would look at the city ordinance, see exactly what it states, and then give the resident adequate time to resolve the issue before it becomes a citation issue. But at the same time, I mean, no one's intentionally trying to, you know, make the neighborhood look terrible. I mean, people like to go ice fishing, they like to go fishing, whatever they may have there, and I'm sure they don't mind moving it, they just need adequate time, but they have to, you know, the ordinance has got to be brought to their attention. And if they don't correct it in a certain amount of time, it can lead to a citation.
Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, I guess the first thing I would say is accountability. There's people in place that are supposed to enforce violations of these ordinances. I feel like a lot of times they get reported, whether via the website, call-ins, social media, emails, et cetera, and nothing ever comes of it. So people just feel like their voice is falling on deaf ears. Well, I guess I would ask, why is there somebody in that position if they're not handling it? I also would question certain ordinances in Andover. You know, for instance, there was a big debate over the color of someone's shed matching the color of their house. To me, that is not a debatable issue, that shouldn't even be an issue. It is your shed, it is on your property. If it does not affect your neighbor's property, I would not think it needs to be of concern to the city council. If it is an eyesore or offensive in some way, whether it be a sign of hate or something like that, of course, that's different than it being the color green that somebody who doesn't like. Thank you.
Mr. Folks, would you please explain what you would do when a resident complains that the city of Andover is not enforcing ordinances such as fish houses, boats, and other debris in front of the house?
Thank you, Bruce. I guess in this case, I would, I would like to talk with the resident, figure out what the issue is, and hopefully try to go through the channels of reporting the issue. When it comes to, obviously, eyesores, debris, debris in front of people's houses, that obviously can create issues when it comes to home value, and I do understand the frustration if, say, a neighbor keeps their lawn unkept, how it would make them feel. Also, I'd like there to be a little bit more of a neighborhood accountability, maybe instead of calling the police right away or complaining to a council member, maybe, hey, just knocking on the door and they're like, hey, maybe I can help you mow your lawn, or maybe I can help you with some of the chores. There might be other issues or other reasons why the property looks the way it is. So first channel, I'd like to see the neighbors helping out each other, talking with each other first, and then other steps taken. Thanks, Bruce.
Ms. Vandeleen.
I loved this question, picturing the fish houses and the boats that we've seen in driveways. We have the opportunity now to thank our amazing staff in the city of Andover, who do exactly what's being described here. On a bi-monthly basis, I do receive a report of the number of complaints that have been filed by persons within the city to report these kinds of incidents. At the time that, generally, by the time the second issue comes around, or the second document comes around, the issue is resolved because it is the duty, not of vigilante style of our city to trot around and find things, but citizens must be the ones to report, and your identity by state law is protected. Call the City Hall, 763-755-5100, and tell them what's on your mind. There are amazing people who solve this. I've seen it done.
And Mr. Butler.
Yeah, so as has been kind of alluded to here, we have a system in place for these things. I would first say I agree with Mr. Folks that, you know, it'd be nice if people would go and talk to their neighbor about an issue in the neighborhood first. Sometimes people don't feel comfortable with that for a whole variety of reasons that we are not privy to, but we do have an anonymous reporting system for these kinds of violations. We have a, we have a mix of rural and suburban areas in the city of Andover, and along with that come really different sort of neighborhood standards about what falls into somebody's property rights and what affects their fellow property owners. And for that reason, we've taken the approach that we want the anonymous reports where there are violations, because there really are different neighborhood standards and differing standards in different areas of the city as to what people are concerned about. So I would encourage people to call that number and, and call that number that Commissioner Vandeleen mentioned, and contact the city. We do have staff that work to provide information to residents who may be inadvertently violating something before a citation's issued.
And now, Mr. Butler. Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of a local small business community.
Sure. So I guess a number of different things come to mind. So while, while I don't own a business personally, I do manage a fairly large organization within the University of Minnesota. I manage a large, busy lab research department in which it's important for us to make budget and effectively manage and lead that organization. In addition, I've had, I've been involved in several business advocacy efforts within the city over the past several months on the council. So in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, we immediately cut some red tape to allow restaurants, for example, to expand their outdoor seating patio area in order to accommodate more outdoor guests than would normally be allowed, to refund some liquor license fees that restaurants were not able to serve during a period of time, and most importantly, we instituted a small business grant program using federal funds passed through to the city that is now providing needed dollars to help support our small businesses locally.
Ms. McDermott, would you please answer the question?
Yes. I do run a veterans LLC, and it benefits all veterans, military and disabled. I think the businesses in, in Andover are being stifled. Certain businesses are allowed to maybe not hold, well, the bigger businesses in Andover, they don't have to observe as many regulations when it comes to the COVID-19, as far as spacing and social distancing, while our smaller businesses do suffer for this. If I was on the city council, I would reach out to those business owners and find out what we can do on the council to help expand and attract more customers to those small businesses, because they're part of our community, you know? That's what makes Andover nice and small, is the small business owners, and they're a huge revenue to taxes, and we want to keep them happy also. But that's basically what I would do.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
Can you please repeat that?
Sure, certainly. Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
Well, the, I have talked to some of the local business owners, and I am a small business owner, and I know this pandemic is terrible for small business, but what I would highly recommend, and a lot of Andover residents are doing this, they're supporting the local business by going to these restaurants, going to the small business. For example, Beef or Brady's, you know, when we, when they first, they were first doing curbside and then opened up outside, people were doing the social distancing and no masks outside, which is okay. But that's the number one thing that Andover residents can do, is to support their local business, and, you know, the big businesses, they have no problems at all. It's the small ones that are hurting. And they did get part of that care grant also to help them financially with the stimulus, economic stimulus.
Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, I think the federal, the grants, they're, they're great, but they're not enough with small businesses, you know, in the area, you know, such as Sweet Toppings, John Smith Subs, you know, these local restaurants. Their families just like the rest of us, and they're working tirelessly just to try to stay afloat right now. And I would, I would look at options as to not only promote more spending in our community, there is things that certain towns in Minnesota have done, where there is like a percentage of, say, your property tax that forms like a city dollar, that is almost like a perk to residents of that community to spend at local businesses. I would say also, as I have owned my own truck, I was a trucking company, a small business, I know what it takes, and I believe that, you know, we're putting in 24 hours a day, every day, trying to stay afloat, and I think it's our duty as city council to make sure small businesses not only can stay afloat, but want to continue to grow and develop in Andover.
And Ms. Vandeleen.
Thank you. Well, running my own business for 30 years, and yes, I was the witch of Anoka, a lot of witch hats, it gave me the opportunity to really understand small business. What's happening here in Andover is any of the tax increases that might have been occurring and the threats from COVID-19 have been offset by council members, butlers, reference to the just under $2 million that has been distributed, is being distributed to the qualified businesses in Anoka. I served a three-year term on the Anoka Area Chamber of Commerce Board, helping small business in the area. Andover is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and our reminders were always shop local, great programs within the chamber, and I have spoken many, many businesses in this area because of my expertise, and they're hurt and they're hopeful, so shop for, shop at their places, please.
Okay, and Ms. Vandeleen, you will be answering the next question. Oh, did I, did I miss my someone?
That's okay. That's just me.
Go ahead. I must be X-ing him out earlier than I should.
Oh, you're fine. Thanks, Bruce. When it comes to small businesses, I, I don't have any experience with a small business. I'm not going to pretend I do, other than maybe running a lemonade stand as a five- or six-year-old in, on Oak View in Anoka, but when it comes to small businesses, I feel that that is a very important part of Andover. Just the way that, where Andover is, we don't have any big highways, we don't have easy way to get to the cities. So industries, manufacturing, light manufacturing are going to kind of shy away from us, obviously. These small businesses help make up that, that difference. I would just implore residents of Andover to try to shop Andover, go to Andover restaurants, family-run restaurants, do, help Andover contracting, or siding businesses, roofing businesses, anything like that. There are people that, in Andover, that do those things, and will, will, will give you a good cost, I'm sure, to do it. Shop Andover.
Sorry. I must, for some reason, just keep, okay. All right. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, cities face a decrease in anticipated revenue this fiscal year and probably reduced revenue next fiscal year compared to pre-pandemic years. What criteria will you use to determine when to reduce expenses by reducing or eliminating city services, and when to hold steady or increase fees or city property taxes to continue city services? Will the criteria be different when evaluating whether it is residents or businesses that will be mainly affected? And this will be answered first by Ms. Vandeleen.
Thank you. The budgeting process that the city engages in, and the highly qualified and very smart financial persons in the city have assisted in getting dollars out so that the maintenance of roads is being done, that many other things, construction jobs in the city are being done. And why I'm kind of dancing around that, I'm saying that's creating jobs. Many of the projects that were voted before COVID hit are being funded now, and you will see trucks and graders and all sorts of equipment throughout the city. That was fortunate. We didn't know this was going to happen. So suddenly, Andover is in a better position and has provided jobs so that all persons who have been in those construction jobs are contributing back to our community. We hope it'll work, it's strengthening, and, and I've been told to stop. Thank you.
You were asked to stop. Mr. Butler.
You can be tough.
So we are in the fortunate position in the city of Andover relative to some other communities, that we do not rely on any kind of local option sales tax as a revenue source. So many communities that are facing serious shortfalls are facing those shortfalls because they're reliant on sales tax revenue that was drastically decreased during the shutdown, initial shutdown months of COVID, and may, maybe remaining low currently. That's not to say it won't affect our finances. So I'm actively engaged in budget discussions right now for 2021 and working toward a restrained spending level to make sure that we are going to be in good position if we have a situation where some taxpayers may not be able to make the property tax payment on time, if there's delayed payments, those sorts of things. We need to be planning for that, and I credit my fellow council members, and the mayor, and the, and the city staff for bringing those issues up and bringing them to the table early in the budgeting process so that we can make sure we're making responsible decisions for, for the, for next year's budget.
And Ms. McDermott.
I would look at what are we spending money on presently? Where can we cut a little bit of that and spend more on our residents? As far as trying to figure out, I don't have a straight answer for you, to be honest. I'd rather, you know, I haven't looked at that topic too much going forward because of COVID, but I know there's a lot of positions in city government that could be eliminated that would save the taxpayers tons of money and stop giving that would save the taxpayers tons of money and stop giving these incentives as present mayor and present council have done, giving raises to certain city workers. Right there alone would save taxpayers' monies.
Mr. Nelson? Due to the coronavirus pandemic, cities face a decrease in anticipated revenue this fiscal year and probably reduced revenue next fiscal year compared to pre-pandemic years. What criteria will you use to determine when to reduce expenses by reducing or eliminating city services and when to hold steady our increased fees or city property taxes to continue city services? Will the criteria be different when evaluating whether it is residents or businesses that will be mainly affected?
Well, the COVID-19 pandemic has really, really affected all of us and we can see with the Andover Community Center expansion, you know, before that it had closed and the YMCA due to COVID-19. So it's projected at losing, it's been approximately 200,000 per year for the last decade, but this pandemic, it'll be about 400,000 that the taxpayers are going to have to subsidize due to COVID-19. But when it comes to city jobs and things like that, we're going to have to go week by week, month by month, see what's available and make some tough decisions because we're not going to be able to, with no or little revenue coming in, we won't be able to cover all the expenditures that we have.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah, I'd say with the decreased revenue, in no way would I want to increase taxes to try to cover that loss. I guess if the decreased revenue is going to be there, then I would look at what, not necessarily jobs need to be cut, I don't want to do that. I think I would question, like they said, what we are spending the money currently on, as in, I know, you know, there's new equipment being bought for the city workers and whether it be loaders, pickup truck, utility truck, water truck, fire truck, where if there's, if any cost is, I would say that, how do I say? I would look at, in order to, how to bring in more money to cover those costs such as parking meters for the new community center, higher fees for rental of ice time. And I get, that's what I would do.
And Mr. Fokes?
Thank you, Bruce. When it comes to shortfalls in the budget, basically, the way I would look at things first is, first and foremost, how can we generate a little bit more money? If there's a way to do that, parking meters, increased, just like candidate Pacheco said, increased ice time, any way that Andover could possibly generate a little bit of money. Second, I would look at maybe things that we could cut. If there, obviously, there's going to have to be some tough decisions made. However, it's just the time that we're in right now. The pandemic, the COVID pandemic has cost a lot of people a lot of money and cities are no different. Lastly, I would look at raising taxes. I'd really like to try to avoid that. I think that we've had our taxes raised quite a bit over the last few years. That would be, have to be a last resort. However, so, in general, find a way to raise some capital, raise some money, see if we can't cut some programs and then at the very least, raise taxes. Thanks, Bruce.
This will be the last question before you start with your, what's the term? Closing statements. It's been a long night for all of us. Okay, and Mr. Fokes, you go next. You go first. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, 89% of Andover residents are white, non-Latino. Of all other racial and customarily marginalized groups, none are separately above 4%. Given that the United States and Minnesota demographic trends indicate increasing diversity, do you think there are barriers to overcome for a more inclusive Andover population? If yes, what are your solutions?
All right, thank you, Bruce. Funny you mentioned the census. I actually am currently working with the census and so we've had several people going around in the neighborhoods, especially in Andover, and that is the consensus, obviously, that Andover is mostly white. When it comes to finding diversity, I love diversity. I think that is something that we should cherish and we should try to welcome as much as we can into our city, but it is a culture thing. We as, we as Andover residents need to find a way to make sure that we are welcoming to people of all race, religions, creeds, everything. That is the culture piece. If we can find ways to do that, we will be able to find a way to be as diverse as we can, which is a very positive thing. So keep that in mind with the residents in Andover. Be as welcoming as you can, understanding as you can, and make sure that the culture is conducive for a welcoming environment. Thanks, Bruce.
Ms. Vandeleen?
Thank you. I firmly believe in equality, having been the first woman to be elected to the city council and having to persuade the fellows that I worked with that I was not a council man, I could be a council person, that took a whole meeting of arguing to get that over. That's diversity, women, LGBTQ people, racial. We're talking about the whole package, not just white folk who live in Andover. I have a Korean daughter. I have mixed-race grandchildren. I'm acutely aware of some of the problems that come forth by having children in our community that may be marginalized. The solution, we worked on it very, very extensively over the last several months and it is mandated by the Metropolitan Council to create affordable housing. Pretty controversial. We've worked, we're doing a minimal on it, but to be able to help that is a campaign of mine. Thank you.
Mr. Butler?
That 89% number is pretty high, but I bet it's lower, I bet it's, I bet it's lower than it was 20 years ago when I moved to Andover. Andover is becoming more diverse over time and we should embrace that. We should welcome that. We need to be a welcoming community to everybody. I've had opportunities to engage with diverse communities through my work with youth programs, with youth sports, as track and field director and president of Andover Athletic Association and my coaching experience, but none of that's new to me because I work at a big diverse place at the University of Minnesota and so I'm working with diverse communities all the time. I think the key to making sure that we remain a welcoming place is to engage the community, engage the residents, engage our schools and our churches and our nonprofits and our youth sports and other activities organizations and make sure that as people move into the community who are from diverse backgrounds, that we are welcoming them, that we are bringing them in and engaging them and involving them in the various activities that are available in Andover and making them part of our community in truth.
Ms. McDermid?
Thank you, Bruce. Andover is becoming more diverse, not that quickly, not quicker than 20 years ago. I think it's, we're going turtle speed ahead, you know, which is fine, but the people that do live here, mostly Caucasian, are very welcoming. They're open to new ideas. A lot of them have multicultural backgrounds. They might be white in skin, but in mentality, they're not, which is wonderful for Andover. But we also need to look at the communities around us, okay? Now, I've, very quickly, I've drawn up some statistics and this is from working with some of the youth groups in the area and the minority groups in Anoka, Coon Rapids, Brooklyn Park. Anoka High School within the next few years, within the next 10 years, will be 50% Latino. A lot of those students will be coming into Andover, into our community, using our facilities, associating with other people in our area. We need to become aware of this and help them acclimate to that small neighborhood feel, but also welcome them.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, Andover has been coming, becoming more and more culturally diverse. You know, my wife is from the Philippines. We have been welcomed everywhere we go and, well, like Mary knows my wife, she's bumped into her, she's very, my wife is very, very polite and has a lot of friends. But we, yeah, as a community in Andover, I do feel we are very welcoming and, like you said, we're going to become more culturally diverse in the future, so we had better prepare for it.
Absolutely.
And I think we're doing an excellent job at that.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, cultural diversity is obviously all over the news, the issues that pertain to it. Andover, although it's easy to say it's a welcoming community, I don't disagree with that, but I do disagree in the sense that there's this fallacy that Andover, people consider Andover this rich, white community. Well, that's not the case. A lot of families here do come from different cultures, different education levels, different income levels, and I think the awareness, I guess, for outside of that is not there. I think Andover could do a much better job, whether it is being active in Pride Month, whether it's exercising and participating in any cultural events throughout the metro area. That's the beauty about the metropolitan areas, we're supposed to be from all over, from all different backgrounds, and I feel like Andover as a whole could do a much better job in embracing multicultural backgrounds.
That's it for the, all the questions that I have for tonight. We will now start with the closing statements and we will begin with Mr. Pacheco.
Thanks, Bruce. I just want to say thank you to everybody for the questions and the time that we were given tonight. I'd like to just say that, you know, I may be, may be much younger, both in age and experience compared to my other candidates, but I do not lack the desire to serve the city of Andover. I believe I'm part of a nice wave of young families that have recently moved and relocated to Andover and I want to help continue to not only grow and develop that, but develop the city for the next modern era, if you will. I hope, you know, on November 3rd, you vote for me to help bridge the gap not only between the residents of Andover and the city council, but also as a community to understand that we're all in this together and give it, the true community sense feel and not just feeling like your voice does not matter. Thank you.
Mr. Fokes?
Thank you, Bruce. First and foremost, I'd like to once again thank the League of Women Voters for having us out here today. Obviously, you've done a great job amongst the pandemic, no less, to organize this. When it comes to me, I'd like to think of myself as a regular guy. I'll be watching the Vikings this weekend. I try to mow my lawn at least once a week. I get crabgrass all the time in fall. You know, I'm not a politician. I just, a few years ago, there was something that happened, obviously, with the community center expansion that irked me and a lot of other people around me that did not like that, and that was when I made a decision to run. I believe that I could be a fresh face, maybe some new ideas, and I would love to, I feel very honored and very humbled by the opportunity to be here today with these five other great people and to humbly ask for your vote. Thanks so much.
Ms. Vandeleen?
I want to compliment all of the persons who are sitting up here and their initiative to come forth and talk about the things that they are concerned with and why they are running. Each one of them has the grievance against the community center and rightfully so, but it extends more to taxes. So here's an invitation for all of us. The ones who are not elected and the ones who are elected should all attend the budget meetings. They're public, they're transparent, there's a nice microphone over there. If you don't like what's being spent, speak to it. If you want to know where it's being spent, speak to it. If you disagree with it and you have a great idea like putting parking meters in the community center parking lot, speak to it. We are a community. We need to heal, we need to unify. I know how to communicate. I know how to lead and guide conflict. I never let my kids fight in front of me, but they won't tell you that. I have a good understanding of law and finance and I believe in law strongly because it creates order and protection and I thank you very much for tonight.
And Ms. McDermid?
Thank you, Bruce, League of Women Voters and Andover Residents for allowing me this time. I really want to be the vox populi, which is Latin for the voice of the people. I've attended enough budget meetings and I've attended enough council meetings to know that unfortunately, our voices are not heard. That is why I decided to run for council just a few months back. It hasn't even been that long that I decided that it's time, that we do have new voices on this council that represent the residents of Andover that we can move forward with. And I promise that if I do get elected, I will listen to all my constituents and hear what they have to say and try to bring that mentality of larger crowds, what we want as a community, not as, not things that go to small interest groups only. Thank you.
And Mr. Nelson, you get the final word. Can we do it again?
I don't want to mislead the audience.
Thank you, Bruce.
I just want to cross, I want to get out of here.
Who's up next? Who's up next?
You are, Mr. Butler.
I am? Okay, thank you very much. Well, thanks to the League for assembling this forum and thanks to all my fellow candidates. It's great to see people interested in public service. I sincerely hope to work with one of you soon to help guide the future of the city of Andover. The one thing I would say is there's a bunch of numbers tossed around tonight. I would just encourage everybody to check in with the city administrator on your numbers, make sure that they line up with the facts that are out there and that we're, that we're all communicating true facts to the public. I want to thank the viewers for tuning in. Andover is a wonderful community in which to live and raise a family. I want to keep it that way and we need to make sure we remain a safe and healthy community, that we're stewards of the public trust, that we maintain and improve our roads and that we preserve the character of our neighborhoods and our community. I am not a one-issue candidate. I am committed to the future of Andover and tackling all the tough challenges that we'll face ahead. I pledge to be open in communication, transparent in my decision-making and always work to achieve the best possible results for our community as a whole. I would humbly ask for one of your two council votes this fall to continue my work for Andover. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Bruce. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all the Andover residents out there who are supporting my campaign and the League of Women Voters for this forum this evening. It's been wonderful and thank you all the candidates. But now, if you're looking for somebody who, a candidate who is fiscally responsible, transparent, and definitely wants your voice heard at the city council and city hall, definitely vote for Randy Nelson. If you'd like any more information about my campaign or to contact me, please go to my website. It's randynelsonforandover.com. And I humbly ask for your vote, whether it's going to be early voting on September 18th or the big vote on November 3rd. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about issues and for running for the council. Thanks, viewers, for your interest in becoming informed voters. You will be voting in two of these six candidates for four-year terms. As we move through this election season, you will find information and links to upcoming and recorded meet-the-candidate forums for local offices organized by our league on lvvabcn.org and QCTV websites. Each voter has several convenient methods to vote this year. You may request an absentee ballot to mail by accessing either the Secretary of State's website or the website mnvotes.org. Additionally, you can vote early in person, starting September 18th, at your city hall or the Anoka County Elections Office. If you need to register to vote or update your registration, you can do that online or when you go to vote. Make your voice heard in the general election by voting by or on November 3rd. Thank you and stay healthy and safe. Good day.